So anyways, hello everybody and welcome, welcome to a meeting of CERC. CERC is the Sustainability, Energy and Resiliency Committee. A committee of volunteers, we're all volunteers, dedicated to providing advice when we can, to the mayor, the city council. And the forerunner of CERC was the Renewable Energy Task Force. And the task force that I was on also, and Councilor Jeff Cohen was on, we were always being the advocate and pushing for the city to hire an energy manager. And that did happen during the term of Renewable Energy Task Force. And so we're also just thrilled to be able to be, help, help the Sustainability and Resiliency Department with sometimes research or giving input on things that are happening at the city environmentally related. And so, well, thanks for Neil Duffy and his staff for, it's just so great that Salem's has been a leader with regard to having a city department that's sustainability and resiliency. So that's so awesome. But anyway, so we meet monthly, basically January through August, we meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month at 6:30. We met in person in the meeting room right over there, in person before the pandemic. And just, we would often have, we would have CERC members there, and I, some of them, some of our more recent CERC members now are surprised when I say this, we would regularly have seven or eight people in, in the seats, sitting over in that room during the Renewable Energy Task Force and then CERC meeting. And so then we all thought that with the pandemic and virtual, that okay, there's going to be some, maybe there'll even be more than that in the remote audience. And the answer to that was no. Even though the ease of attending a virtual meeting was there. Anyways, I just thought I'd give you a couple of things that CERC has done in the recent past, recent past. The Sustainability and Resiliency Department has put on the EV Expo and several of us were there for the whole afternoon at Salem High School. And just, we loved that event. We did it in Beverly also, a couple of years ago. We helped, we assist Stacy and her staff, and Neil's staff with the Green Energy Fair. When the city was drafting its incredibly important Flood District Overlay and Climate Resiliency, Flood District Overlay, which is a really important thing for guiding real estate development regarding the climate change crisis, the planning board would come before us and we would, I can just remember, we would have like a 25-minute Q and A after they presented their PowerPoint and we would, Tom Devine. This summer, on June, the Coast, the Department of Coastal Zone Management, they have a draft plan for resilient coasts. And Betsy of CERC, me of CERC, Bonnie Bain of SAFE, and Christian of the Sustainability and Resiliency Department, we were there. It was a workshop, we had, we worked, worked in groups and then we had input. And then I was, I'm a professor of Salem State Geography and Sustainability, and I was going to submit some written comments, but I wanted to do it as Chair of CERC. So I presented it to CERC and we discussed it for 15, 20, 25 minutes. And CERC said, gave me the charge. They said, John, yes, we direct you as Chair to submit formal written comments to CZM regarding the resilient coast draft plan. So I was able to do that, and I think it's on the website, I don't know, it's supposed to be. Those comments are so long. So that's just a few examples of what CERC does. And I'm really excited about this tonight. And I'm a longtime member of the Ipswich River Watershed Association, and so just thrilled to have Erin here. I, I was just hoping that Dominic, Mayor Dominic Pangallo would just be able to give us some opening comments and he let us know right away that he would. And so I'd like to proudly introduce Mayor Dominic Pangallo, our current mayor, and he's just, to be a volunteer committee for such a progressive mayor that thinks about climate change every day of the week is just an awesome thing. And so, so welcome, Mayor Pangallo. Thank you so much.
I have some notes, so I'm just going to stand over here, that's all right. I am incredibly proud of the work that Salem's done in the sustainability and climate action space. I'm proud to, Climate Mayors was the first organization I joined when I became mayor elect. I'm proud to have been a community owner of the Massachusetts Coastal Communities Alliance and just recently been appointed to the State Social Advisory Commission to continue to work around resilience and sustainability. A top priority for our, this administration, I think it was for the previous administration. My wife, Dr. Kristen Pangallo, who's also a professor at Salem State, served on the Renewable Energy Task Force when their school appointed her to that. It's, you know, obviously it's a high priority. So I'm grateful that we were able to take the energy manager's position and actually make it a full department. And I know that other cities and towns that are, you know, 45, 50,000 people don't have a full department focused on this work. So, super grateful for Neil, Stacy, the whole team, for everybody in the planning department and engineering and also working in this space, and to the members of CERC and our community partners that are engaged in sustainability work. I, so, I apologize that I'm not able to stay for the entire presentation tonight. I have another commitment at seven o'clock, but I, the Ipswich River means a lot to me. I grew up going to the Odomon Ipswich River Wildlife Sanctuary, going to the camp there, canoeing down the river. It was a huge part of my life, and for many of our communities, it's also a huge part of our drinking water supply. We are fortunate in Salem that through the Water Supply Board, the Beverly, the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board, that has existed for over a century, that our ratepayers have invested in a system of reservoirs that provides a consistent, reliable water source for us, drawing the water out of the, out of the river, watershed and other sources at times of peak flow, and also following the time of year and flow restrictions that try to maintain a healthy river ecosystem. And we know that right now, I asked Deb Tannenwars, the engineer, just to confirm this, you know, our, our water supply levels, despite the drought declaration and level we have right now in the Commonwealth and the kind of end of the, of the dry season of the summer, we're at about 71% of our capacity in the reservoirs. And that's important because it ensures that we have a reliable and consistent water supply for our community. And it's also important to articulate that water supply is often used as a scare tactic to argue against housing growth. And we know that to meet our housing needs in Salem, Mass Inc. issued a report last year that says we need to create about 2,200 units of new housing over the next decade. So it's about 220 units per year, which is about 1%, just over 1% of our current housing stock. So we know that if we have 19,000 housing units and we're at 71% of our supply at the end of the dry season, adding an additional number of housing units to get us to a total of 21,200, won't have a significant impact on the water supply levels in our reservoirs. That doesn't mean that we should be responsible stewards of this resource, but it does mean that water supply is not a barrier to housing growth in our community. And it also doesn't absolve us of the larger responsibilities from planning to our region related to conservation. We all have a responsibility to preserve our water supply. Salem is an environmental justice community, as I don't need to tell the folks in this room. And that means we need to ensure that our community members have access to safe drinking water and that our water supply generally is safeguarded. And those are not mutually exclusive objectives. We have, and I think this will be touched on in the presentation, a North Shore Water Resilience Task Force that's made up of communities throughout the watershed, talking about a more resilient water supply system, protecting the watershed for generations to come and beyond just Salem, beyond just the Salem Beverly area. There are a lot of options under consideration and study from this, from this task force. We're trying to be innovative, I think the group is being very thoughtful in their work. I will say, one of the options that's been, that's been studied in the past by the task force is one I'm not a big fan of, and just to briefly touch on it. The idea in this option, which is only one of the options, is that these other surrounding towns that mostly draw from well water, which are impacted by drought conditions and do draw from the river in the seasons when we don't want to be drawing from the river, that those communities could be shifted into the Salem Beverly system more, and that Salem, possibly Beverly, could be shifted into the MWRA. And that's, that's a concept that I'm not really a fan of. I mean, our ratepayers have invested billions of dollars in, in the system over centuries. There's concerns around the water chemistry, around changing systems, but really, there's also an equity concern. I can't ever endorse a plan that would take an environmental justice community and remove an essential resource from that community so that more affluent communities around it could benefit from that and consume it. So I think there's a lot of options on the table. That's not one that, that I think is in the best interest of Salem, one that I would want us to advance. But we are, regardless of that, I think, partners in the larger effort to ensure the health of the river and the watershed in the long term, and the water supply long term. It's important for the ecology of the entire watershed. It's also important because we want to see those surrounding towns doing their part to address our housing crisis. And in those communities, it is a legitimate barrier to housing growth because they do lack access to reliable water supply. So I think we are all in alignment that we want a river that is strong, we want drinking water supplies that are reliable, safe and healthy for all of our people, and that we can engage in this work thoughtfully, constructively. I am incredibly grateful to the Ipswich River Watershed Association, to CERC, for having this conversation, for the conservation efforts that organizations like SAFE and so many others in our community have engaged in over the years. I do think it makes a difference. Human behavior is extremely hard to change, but you know, we're at work trying to do that, both through policy and through providing the programs and services that can help people understand that water is a scarce resource. And you know, the choices we make on a daily basis directly impact future availability of that resource for our children and for future generations. So I really appreciate the invitation to be here and to introduce Bonnie, to introduce Erin and to say thank you for having this conversation. And again, I apologize that I can't stick around, but I do look forward to seeing the recording of it.
Okay. Thank you so much. So I was thrilled to death to be able to introduce Erin. She is the Executive Director of the Ipswich River Watershed Association. A little factoid for the audience is she also, before that, she was a member of CERC. So she was a member of CERC, we loved having her participation and her enthusiasm and expertise. And when, and she was working for, well, that was, were you the climate resiliency person?
Yeah.
She was the climate resiliency staff person for the challenges that Ipswich River faces regarding climate. And so when she became Executive Director, she definitely, her bandwidth and her workload had, she had to regretfully resign from CERC and take on her new responsibilities. You might be interested, she got her, she has a Bachelor of the Arts in Arts from Bates College, and she got a Master of Science in Water Science Policy and Management from Oxford University. And she and her family live in Salem, and she recreates in Salem. And of course, we're going to learn about her, the state of the watershed, its health, some of the comments that Mayor Pangallo meant, but just looking so much forward to it. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. So I don't, I'm going to try. But I'm Erin, I, as John mentioned, I live in Salem, I live just on the other side of the commons, so I got to walk here, and I'm pretty sure you only can get pedestrian-accessible speakers for your actual meetings. So, you know, love CERC, support CERC, don't have enough time to serve on CERC. But to echo the earlier comments, like, we're so lucky to live in a city that is so progressive and is thinking so dynamically about our climate challenges. And my job tonight is to talk to you about how some of those climate challenges and water-related challenges are intersecting. So Ipswich River Watershed Association, we're a community-based nonprofit, we're headquartered in Ipswich. We call ourselves the voice of the Ipswich River. And our mission is to protect and restore the Ipswich River and its watershed now and for future generations. We use these for like infographics to try and explain the breadth of the work that we're doing in service to that mission. So under our Restore umbrella, we are looking at basically undoing past harms to our river. And what that means is taking out outdated infrastructure, that's usually dams that we're not, we're no longer using, right sizing culverts so that the river, we can restore kind of natural functions of the entire river system and support the ecosystem that the river supports. Our Protect umbrella is our future-looking work, which is looking at policies that we're putting in place today, and decisions we're making today that are going to affect the future of the river to make sure that it stays as healthy as it is now into the future. And then these two other areas, or two other icons, I should say, have people in them. Because for us, our work is really rooted in the community that lives and works and relies on the Ipswich River. And the way that we approach this work is how do we balance the needs of all of the people, of all of the people here, who need the Ipswich River for drinking water, for recreation, for the mental health of being outside and the water it gives us, and balance those needs with the needs of the ecosystem, keeping water in the river, making sure it's clean enough to support wildlife, and also making sure that it has the space and kind of resilience to adapt to challenges that we know it's facing from climate change, among other things. So that, those kind of people aspect is enjoy. We do a lot of work getting people out on the river. And if you come up to visit us in Ipswich, we have a kayak launch and a bunch of kayaks, and you can use our boats and go out on the river and fall in love with the river and hopefully join us in our mission to protect it. And on the engage piece, that's what we're doing right now, engaging with people, talking to them, educating them, advocating at the state and town levels for the changes that we want to see that are protected and where we're helping. I will say too, this is a small enough group, that if you guys have questions, let's just do it as we go. You guys can just throw up your hand and interrupt me, and I'm happy to have this be more of a conversation than a lecture. Okay, so, this slide, I always put up here because I want to emphasize the fact that we're a membership organization. John mentioned, Teal, a longtime member. We have 1,500 dues paying members across the watershed. Most of our work is funded by those members. And so that's usually a question that comes up later, but I'll start with it. I'd also like to stop on this slide because of this beautiful illustrated map that we have of the watershed. And I'm going to remind you all, back in fifth grade, we learned what a watershed was. A watershed is a geographic area, topographical area that all drains into the same body of water. So when we're looking at our map, the light green area is the Ipswich River watershed. And any drop of water that falls from the sky lands in that light green area will ultimately make its way downhill into the Ipswich River, and then ultimately out into the Atlantic Ocean out by Crane Beach. That means when we're talking about the Ipswich River and its watershed, we're talking about Ipswich River water, we're talking about all of the water that is interconnected in this system. That includes all of the ponds, lakes, tributaries, rivers, streams, and also all of the groundwater that make up that watershed, all of which plays into ultimately the health of the river. One of the reasons that I love working in this space, and I got a degree in water management, and I do rivers now professionally, that's what says my resume, she does rivers, is because a river, a river really serves as a barometer for the health of the whole ecosystem. Because anything that is happening across our entire watershed area has the potential to show up in our river. Whether that be water that we're using and we're pulling out of the ground, whether it be pollutants that are sitting on the ground or being discharged into the river. So if our aim is to have a healthy river, that means that we are looking at the entirety of what is happening in the watershed. And so a lot of the work that I and my staff do is very land-based, and we're looking at development, and we're looking at human activity, and we're looking at how roads are being managed, because we know that those decisions are ultimately going to show up in the river, either now or in a few years. All right, so the number one issue that threatens the health of the Ipswich River is this question of supplies. And I get to talk to you guys about drought on like the rainiest day of the entire year, which is always how it goes. But these, this is a very lovely, dramatic before and after of the drought that we experienced last year. So this is a stretch of the river. That's what it looked like on your left last summer, and on your right, last October. Last October, we were in a very severe drought. We probably all experienced here, the, has fire season, which was a reflection of the drought conditions that we were in. This is also striking for me because typically you would see more water in the river in October than you do in, in the summertime. And so the fact that it was reversed highlights both how severe that drought was, and also it's very unusual to have your low flows happening in October, November time instead of in the summertime. That is a reflection of kind of the climatic change reality that we're experiencing, that drowths are just getting both more frequent and also more surprising in their timing. So our river has seen droughts of record, which means we've hit record lows in 2016, and then 2020, and then 2022, and then 2024. This drought lasted until last spring, then we had a rainy spring, and now we're back in drought conditions. And so this, we know that we're going to be, we're going to be experiencing increasing levels of drought because of climate change going forward. And what we're really looking at is how do we make sure that the river is healthy enough that it can sustain through those drought periods? This is just what I mentioned, this is current drought status in Massachusetts, so we're currently in significant drought. Today's rain probably doesn't change the drought status, one rainstorm typically doesn't. Hopefully gets a little bit rainier over the next month or so. This was last looked at in September, so they're due to kind of update this. This is a little stale at this point, but I would expect for either still in significant drought or possibly conditions have gotten worse at this point because we've had such a dry and sunny, hot fall. Any questions on drought? So Mayor Pangallo totally scooped me on this. But, surprise. So everyone who lives in Salem gets their water from the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board, which pulls water from the Ipswich Basin. And I borrowed this graphic from the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board website, which they just created, and it looks amazing. So the way this system works is your treatment plant sits on the edge of Wenham Lake. If you've ever driven up Route 1A north, you drive right along the edge of Wenham Lake, and you can see the reservoir from there. Water is pumped out of the canal, which is connected to the Ipswich River, during the winter and during times when the flow is high enough to sustain that pumping. It's typically pumped into Putnamville reservoir. The water stays there for a while, and then it is pumped into Wenham Lake ultimately, and then used from, out of Wenham Lake through the treatment plant. It's also, we get, you got, we get some of our water from Longham reservoir, which is another stream system in Beverly and Wenham. And then it's possible also to pump straight from the canal into Wenham Lake. More typically, they're pumping from the canal into Putnamville and then into Wenham Lake. So that's how it's, yeah.
What's the purpose of the reservoirs?
The purpose of the reservoirs is, so, good question. So I will say Wenham Lake is a natural lake, it's been there since the last Ice Age, and it has Salem, the city of Salem, gotten rights to Wenham Lake water in the 1860s. So the Civil War was happening, which is, I just like to underscore, when we started making decisions about how water was going to be managed in this region, and we're still operating based on those decisions, regardless of all, everything has changed since then. So that's when, when Salem started using Wenham Lake. Putnamville reservoir is an entirely man-made reservoir. So that used to not be a lake until the Water Supply Board built that up and created that reservoir. And it is created to increase the storage capacity of the system. So Salem is really lucky in that, and Mayor Pangallo touched on this, our water rights are very old. We're one of the oldest, largest communities here, so we supersede many of our neighboring towns in terms of rights to the water. That's why Salem gets Wenham Lake and Wenham doesn't. And I hear about that a lot. And also, we have reservoirs. So as Mayor Pangallo mentioned, the reservoir, they kind of operate on an annual calendar. At this point in the year, or maybe it was like three weeks ago, the reservoirs were at their lowest point. Then they will start redistributing the water and ultimately start pumping out of the river in December, given that, if the flows are high enough. The reservoirs will be totally full by May, they will then stop pumping out of the river, and you'll use the water in the reservoirs over the course of the summer. And so those reservoirs are giving you a little bit of resiliency in the system, so you're not relying only on the water that is available in that moment. Yeah.
So is there any, is there any function that, in terms of that circulation, that's dictated by water chemistry or anything that's, that's changes, is the Longham reservoir chemistry and the Putnamville reservoir, water chemistry, such that anything going into Wenham Lake is, you know, the current treatment regimen, you know, regimen that they have is sufficient for whatever the water chemistry is, either it's directly from Ipswich or directly from one of the other reservoirs?
Yeah, so there's, there are a few water chemistry concerns that are being kind of managed in the system. The first is, if there's a very deliberate decision to take water out of the river and put it in Putnamville, and then it seasons there for many months before it goes into Wenham Lake. And that seasoning process, that, that time that it is sitting in the reservoir actually improves the quality. And so it also means that you're not pumping directly into the reservoir that you're withdrawing your drinking water, which from a resiliency standpoint is great because you don't, you want to make sure that there's some lag time there, that if there is something nasty that you're pumping in, it's not going straight to your reservoir. The other piece of this is waters withdrawn in the wintertime and flows are high, and flows are high contaminants tend to be diluted essentially. So the water quality is better if the flows are at a reasonably high level. Our water quality in the river gets significantly worse in the summertime when flows are low. That's the case for Longham reservoir. The decision of when they're taking water out of Longham reservoir and putting it into Wenham Lake is entirely driven by what's the water quality in Longham reservoir, which tends to be very seasonal. And once you start getting into the growing season and into the spring and summer months, that quality is not good enough to put into Wenham Lake.
And are they, so, they're at different sub-basins, or is there anything in terms of the land use for the particular areas contributing to those reservoirs that would distinguish, I mean, you touched on it a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is basically that infographic, but then, but let's look at it in a map to how these things actually are, where they are in relation to each other. So for orientation, we're down here in Salem, we've come up here, 1A goes like this and skirts the edge of Wenham Lake. This is Longham reservoir. So you can see, this blue shaded area is its watershed, its sub watershed. So there is, there are developments in here, the watershed includes 128, so there's a significant roadway, there's a few shopping centers in there. The area around Wenham Lake itself is quite protected for the most part, except it also includes the Beverly Airport. So that's something that we would want to pay attention to, what's happening at the airport. Putnamville reservoir, because it is man-made, doesn't really have much of its own watershed because it's basically just the immediate area right there that is, that is draining into the reservoir, it's not connected to a larger system. This is the Ipswich Canal. This is also, the canal runs through land owned by the Water Supply Board, that's also protected and closed to public access, and it runs through Wetland area. Any questions on that? So, and Mayor Pangallo touched on this too, Salem and Beverly are not the only communities that drink Ipswich River water. All of these cities and towns are getting their municipal water supply either fully or in part from Ipswich River water in the basin. So Wilmington, Lynnfield, Lynn, Peabody, Salem, Danvers, Beverly, Wenham, Middleton, Topsfield, Hamilton, Ipswich. Also, all, any and all private wells that are in this white area are also intercepting Ipswich River water. So in total, it's about 350,000 people that are drinking Ipswich River water, relying on this resource for their drinking water supplies. And when we're, when we think back to that first slide, where we're thinking about where in drought, it hasn't been raining, this is the intersection with how our decisions and human behavior is intersecting with factors that maybe we can't control, like the amount of rain, because we use this resource very intensively. And when it is a drought, we use it even more intensively when people are watering their lawns typically. And so the question is, how do we, how do we kind of manage this entire system in a way that is more sustainable and more resilient so that the river is not under the greatest stress from our activities when it is also under drought conditions?
So that those communities that are not circled are, they are getting their waters primarily from MWRA?
So MWRA, yeah, MWRA comes all the way up into So MWR, yeah, MWR comes all the way up into Burlington, Redding. Lynnfield gets some, Wakefield, Marblehead. The ones to the north are getting, North Redding and North Andover are getting water from the Maxup Basin from the north of them. Boxer actually only, doesn't have a town water system, they only have private wells. So they're getting Ipswich River water too, but it's just coming from the wells in their own, in their own backyards. You know what I was going to say? This situation, so in Massachusetts, we're a home rule state, which means every town gets to kind of make its own decisions how things are going to happen in that town. And I know many of you are very active in local government and you are aware of the pluses and minuses of home rule. The minuses for, from my perspective and from the river's perspective is that this is like a perfect setup for a tragedy of the commons situation. Where we're all, we have 350,000 people relying on the same resource. We're all making incredibly rational decisions from our perspective about how we're going to manage that resource. And then collectively it turns into a piece that is unsustainable. And it's unsustainable both from the river's point of view because we're seeing this river that should be flowing year-round go dry during periods of time and in stretches. It's also unsustainable for many of our communities who are seeing severe limitations on how much water there is available to them. Especially the communities on the downstream end of our basin. So Ipswich, Hamilton, Wenham, Topsfield. And that is because they sit at the mouth of the river. They experience the impacts of all of the decisions made uphill from them, from all of these other communities. And so the water that we're all pumping out of the river as it's moving through the basin is affecting how much, how much water is available for those communities. Any questions on that?
I just want to make a comment too in terms of like, when you think about citizens of cities, towns and you maybe, you know, their interest in really helping protect the river. When you think about it, the two biggest withdrawers of water from the Ipswich are not in the watershed. You know, so having Erin.
Who are the two biggest?
Salem and Beverly. So we're the, sorry, yeah, we're the two biggest. So having, so another reason why I just love having Erin come to us today and the mayor touched on it too, is just in terms of, you know, we can all be better citizens and we can, we, you know, care about protecting the river. And, and, and you know, and we're so fortunate with our, the forefathers of Salem that Erin referred to with this, these, that, that, these large storage, storage facilities, you know. Wenham being a natural lake and then man-made Putnamville. But, yeah, so, you know, so we've got to care about this protection too. And we are, and our homes and our businesses aren't inside the watershed.
Yeah, so to John's point, which we didn't plan this, but my next slide is water use by communities. Just to give us a sense of, this is million gallons per day on average of the communities that are using Ipswich River water for their municipal water supply. So obviously Salem and Beverly, they're a combined system. They're also some of the largest communities in the region. Their water use is very high. So we have an outsized impact on the resource. I will say the use of our reservoirs does mitigate that a bit because we are able to take water when the river is high. The other communities that don't have reservoirs, which, which would be a lot of our smaller, our smaller neighbors. Ipswich has some small reservoirs, Wenham, Hamilton don't have any. They're just using water, they're pumping water when they need it. So that means in August, in a drought, they're pumping water that is directly connected to the river. This was also, Mayor Pangalo mentioned this. So the North Shore Water Resilience Task Force is one of the primary mechanisms that the Watershed Association is engaging with towns to try and discuss this collective problem and challenge that we're facing. This is an incredibly innovative forum. You know, it doesn't look it because it's just a bunch of people in suits meeting. But this hasn't really been attempted before in Massachusetts because we are that home rule state and we've all been setting up our own water systems and managing them independently. The idea of getting all of these communities talking to one another and thinking about how we can manage this resource more effectively collectively than we can going at it alone. And that is both, the, the charge of the task force is twofold. So one, to improve water supply resiliency and to improve ecosystem health. And for us at the Watershed Association, it's really important that those are two co-equal goals that we're thinking about at the same time and balancing at the same time. And as I mentioned before, it's very aligned with our view that we kind of have to do both things at, we have to do both things at once. We have to support the people that live in our watershed that rely on our river. We also have to support the river itself. So we've been having a lot of conversations in this forum for the last three years, I would say, intensively, doing a lot of studying as to what the options might be to start managing this resource more collaboratively instead of having, you know, 15 different water systems across the watershed. Making decisions independently.
Erin, have you looked at whether there's a, I don't know whether it would be synergistic or antagonistic, to tell you the truth, effect with respect to any of the regional efforts ongoing under MS4 and their Phase II work? Because that, all of that stormwater related work is so critical to the health of the watershed. And there's already, you know, those efforts are sort of, sort of dictated to a large degree by the regulations and cost of implementing compliance for those regulations. But it seems like it would be, it would go hand in hand with trying to maintain that co-equal in our ecosystem health that you're talking about.
Yeah, so at the Watershed Association, we do a lot of work on the MS4 side of things. And for those of you who don't know, MS4 is basically the stormwater permit that all of the cities and towns around here have it. And every year, if the government reissues your permit, which they're a little behind right now, you have certain requirements that you have to meet about how you're managing stormwater. So from a quality perspective, this is a pretty obvious, like we don't, we want to keep stuff out of the stormwater that is bad for the environment. You guys have Salem Sound Coast Watch, which is another environmental nonprofit headquartered right here in Salem that does a ton of this work about keeping polluted stormwater out of Salem Sound. And you guys should all check them out, they do incredible work. On the water supply side, so we play that role for the communities in the watershed. On the water supply side though, the, the challenge with stormwater is that when we develop land and it becomes impertinible, which is your commuter phone card for the day. So the parking lots, buildings, that stormwater is now sheeting off and it's picking up pollutants, but it's also just running off of the land into the nearest body of water. And what we would really like to see it, to see happen is for it to soak into the ground and start recharging our aquifer. That groundwater is the biggest reservoir in the system. That's where most of the water in the watershed is, is in our groundwater. So the groundwater table, like the surface water drops every summer. And when it rains, we want the water to be going back into the ground to recharge the groundwater. Ultimately that will feed into our river's declines. So there is, there are conversations about how we do this on a very local level, how are we making sure that our stormwater is serving this end goal of recharging the aquifer? I will say, our watershed is not, is not incredibly developed. We have a lot of open space, we have a lot of protected space. So from a macro level, there are kind of limited benefits that we can see to the water budget if you're looking at the entire watershed. But that is not to say there aren't very local benefits that you can see by making sure that you're recharging local aquifers and local sub-basins. That conversation is happening with the towns themselves. It hasn't really happened at the task force level. I just put this slide in here because it shows all of the towns that are involved in that task force. So it's any town that shares a footprint with the Ipswich River watershed, plus the towns that drink Ipswich River water, like Salem and Lynn, who are fully outside of the watershed.
By the way, I love that map, that's, that's really cool.
Yes, I didn't make that map, but they did a really good job. So the conversations, and Mayor Pangalo kind of alluded to this too. The options on the table for the task force in my mind are, they're, they're threefold. If we're going to simplify things, which we're going to do. One is to bring in more water from outside of the basin to supplement the supplies regionally. And what that would look like is MWR water for some of the communities drinking Ipswich River water. We were talking about on one of the previous maps, the MWR, which is the Quabin Reservoir System, already comes close to our basin, actually like hits the fringes, right? So it comes all the way to Marblehead, Peabody has a connection, Lynnfield has a connection, Wilmington has a connection. So it's kind of right there on the edge of the communities that are relying on the Ipswich River. That system is actively looking to expand because they have basically conserved their way. They were built to supply 300 million gallons per day to Boston's surrounding suburbs and their demand right now is around 200 million gallons a day because we have collectively gotten much more efficient in our water use since that reservoir was built 100 years ago. So the MWR did their own study a few years ago that was looking at what if, how would we get more water into the North Shore? What would that look like? How much would it cost? The politically easiest option is if the MWR builds a pipeline to every community that wants to connect to it and it's kind of one pipeline per community. That is also the, by far, the most expensive option because you're running kind of multiple pipelines, you're running pipelines through communities. The price tag on that, they were estimating was like $1.5 billion if you wanted to run all of those pipelines and expand all the way up. That conversation really kickstarted the discussion around the task force. Because if we can start combining our systems, we don't actually have to run MWR through every town to get all the way to Ipswich. We could connect Ipswich to Hamilton, we could connect Hamilton to Wenham and so on, and bring MWR through the system in that way. Not to say that it has to be every town that is connected to this system, but there are certainly efficiencies to be gained if towns are doing things collaboratively instead of independently. On the flip side, that's politically the hardest thing to do because you've got to get 15 disparate communities to start talking and coming to agreement about how they're going to wheel water between the communities. And so that's really what the task force is designed to do, is to facilitate those conversations that hopefully can realize benefits at a much lower cost.
The cost of the pipelines, is that something either the towns would have to foot or is the MWR somehow would pay for all this infrastructure?
No, MWR, so the towns would have to foot, to pay for the infrastructure upgrades. Then you, if you're, so this is actually the same kind of setup as the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board. MWR is a bulk water supplier, they sell communities treated water and then the communities distribute that. So a community that hooks into MWR will have to buy water from MWR and sell it to their residents. Same thing as Salem Beverly does now. Salem and Beverly each purchase water from your water utility and then distribute it to all of their customers. So that's kind of option one, we bring water in from outside of the basin, offering supplies. Option two is kind of use, use the in-basin reservoirs more effectively. And what I mean by that is rely on them, create storage opportunities so when the flow is high, when you're in floods, when you're in the winter, when the river is the highest, you're able to save some of that water and use it during times when the river is the lowest. There's only one option for a new reservoir in the basin. And I, as far as I know, in the whole state of Massachusetts, which is in Topsfield, it's a land already owned by the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board. They bought that land as kind of a future proofing against the system. So that is an option, they have the ability to build another reservoir there, which would give us more winter storage. The challenge with that option is their reservoir site, Route 1 runs through the middle of it. And so in order to build a reservoir there, you would have to elevate Route 1 about 35 feet with the reservoir to go underneath it. So there's some infrastructure challenges there, also not a cheap option. Option three, and my favorite option, is conservation and demand management. And thinking about, can we reduce the demand, the water demand enough that we build resiliency into the system because we're not creeping up to the, basically the carrying capacity of the watershed? And I like to put this picture of these guys here because they're so excited about the rate barrels. And when we talk about conservation and demand management, like at the Watershed Association, we do a lot of education around how can you conserve water in your home, right? So we have these green escapes guides and they're about how you conserve water in your own gardens and we love that. But there's this larger conversation around conservation and demand management that we've started to have in the energy space, which is how do we grow and we continue to develop, but we do not increase our carbon emissions or we, or our energy demand? And I challenge everyone to start thinking about water in the same way. How do we grow and but conserve water at the same time? We actually have this, if you guys are interested in flipping through it. We call it the Recipe for Water Resiliency. And it's basically an enhanced water conservation plan that we take at a community level to really say, we're going to invest in driving down water demand and that is going to improve the resiliency of our system. It's going to improve the sustainability of our system and it's going to protect our natural water resources in a way that also balances growth and the demands from housing and so forth.
How do you respond to the concern that our water suppliers have a vested interest in selling more water? So if we do, if we use less water, the rates are typically going to go up because they still need to maintain their systems. So the incentive for people to reduce their demand is, you know, it, it might be because they want to do good. But they usually want to do it cheaply. And if this is driving up rates, then it sort of washes down a little bit of that benefit. So what's your, what is the response that you would have to that? How can we?
Yeah, water, like pricing water is, I mean, people have, do write theses on this. How do you price water in a way that's applicable and that actually, you know, promotes the behavior that you want it to promote? And that is a challenge because right now, we pay for our water infrastructure largely through the water rates, water and sewer rates that we pay. So if you dramatically reduce demand, you have to increase the per gallon price in order to cover your costs. I think it's a huge challenge and I think part of this conversation is rethinking how we are paying for that critical infrastructure because we have incentivized, we have incentivized water consumption in order to pay for the construction that we need. There is, Ipswich, for example, the strategy that they've taken is they have different summer and winter rates. They're, so across the year, their budget is balanced, but their summer rates are about five times higher than their winter rates. And that's where we pay our water bill at our headquarters, so we see that. And that really gets people to think about in the summer, how I shouldn't be using very much water. So they're trying to specifically shave demand in the summertime because they don't have a lot of storage capacity. And because water, their reservoirs get low very quickly when it stops raining. So that's one option is to think about seasonal rates or to think about kind of essential water use you can make very cheap. So the water I need for drinking, for bathing, for brushing my teeth, for cooking is very cheap. But anything that I'm using kind of above that base rate gets very expensive very quickly. And then basically those luxury uses of water, like lawn watering, car washing outside in your driveway and swimming pools, they start to pay for some of the infrastructure for those essential water uses. But that's a, that's a very complicated economic problem, conversation.
Given the numbers you showed several slides ago, I estimate that there's a lot of business use of water versus personal use. Is that, is that true in our, in our two communities?
It's still, the majority of water is for residential use. But it is, compared to a lot of the other communities, that's true. So Salem, Beverly and Danvers in particular have measurable commercial water uses. The other communities have like almost none, right? It's like less than, it's under 10% of their water demand is going to commercial uses. One, like, so when the Salem Power Plant years ago converted to gas, that new power plant is much more water efficient and the city of Salem's water demand in total went down a lot when the new power plant came online. And a lot of the conservation that we've seen across the state, when I was talking about the Quabin system, is because our industrial users have gotten so much more efficient. And they have a clear economic incentive because that's an operating cost to them so that they can reduce it then, you know, then they understand that bottom line in a way that means your residents is not feeling that high.
If I'm remembering correctly, this-
If I'm remembering correctly, the Salem-Beverly Water Supply Board, the money that they make does not directly correlate to how much water they sell. And so they're actually incentivized to use less water because that will save them money. And I don't know the exact details, but I know that, that that was something that they learned about to run the facility.
Yep. And I will say too, there's, there's the cost of treating water that the Salem-Beverly Water Supply Board is bearing and then treating that water to drinking water standards, making sure that it's clean. There's also the cost of getting that water from the treatment plant into your home and that pipe system is very expensive to maintain. As you can imagine, in Salem, it's very old. We have one of the first water distribution systems anywhere, ever. And so that's a lot of underground infrastructure that the city has to maintain. Was there, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so with option one, there is a pipe going to every community.
Yeah.
And that's at like one and a half billion dollars. They looked into, what if the pipe just went to like Salem, Lynn and Beverly, which were the, the users with the most demand for water? Wouldn't that be much cheaper and also lower the demand significantly for the watershed?
Yeah.
Is that something they've looked into?
Yeah, so at the low end, it's connecting those high volume users that are already close to the end of the MWRRA pipeline. And then you're looking at like $150 million is what they estimate, estimate. The scenarios that they've looked at are, I think we've looked at like six scenarios. There's basically an infinite number of scenarios that you can, there's not infinite, but you know, 15, 15 communities, what if 14 switched? What if 13 switched? What if these two combined? So these are all very rough numbers. But yeah, if you're looking at most cost effective, it's get the closest communities to MWRRA connected first. Actually, one of the things I always like to point out too is if the river we're talking, which is our job, if the river's talking, the, if we can save water here, it flows down the entire river. If Ipswich saves water, I mean, it's great for Ipswich, but the rest of the river doesn't benefit from that. So I would love to push this upstream. I would love to get these towns especially thinking about how to conserve water because the water they conserve flows all the way down the river. So that's another piece of how cost effective it is, is looking at where those out, those withdrawals are happening, trying to move them up the watershed and capture more of those benefits.
Is there any kind of rule of thumb as to how much water is used for lawns and washing cars and the stuff that you clearly could stop doing?
Yes. So the state of Massachusetts says that residential use should be 65 gallons per capita per day, residential use. At Irwell, we push a number that's closer to 40 gallons per person per day as where the river can sustainably maintain them. My family, I have a family of five, we use about 30 gallons per person per day. And I would say, I did that calculation up for myself because I wanted to feel like how real is that 40 number? And it feels, you know, we have dishwasher, we wash our, we have a washing machine, we do take showers, we, you know, we drink water out of our tap. But we do, you know, I live there, so we're very water conscientious. We don't have a big lawn. We don't run the water when we're brushing our teeth. So we're living, it doesn't feel restrictive, it's just if you're mindful of it. You can easily get low 40 gallons per day. On the flip side, if you have an irrigation system that's watering a lawn, it's using about 1,000 gallons an hour. So it's just dwarfing anything that's happening in the home. So when we're talking, in Salem, actually, we're actually pretty close. I think we're at like 45 gallons per capita daily. So we're pretty close to that 40 number and that's largely driven by the fact we have a lot of apartments and very little outdoor lawn watering on the residential side.
I don't know if it's like a dumb question, but if you're within like the watershed, why would watering your lawn matter? Doesn't it go back into the water anyway?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two factors to that. One is you lose a lot of water to evaporation when you have an irrigation system. So those losses are not getting back to the ground. The other thing is if you are watering your lawn or any other plant, you're actually hoping that the plant is using that water and that it's not soaking into the ground. And so in the summertime, the water that you're putting on your lawn is not making it far enough into the dirt to recharge the water table. It's being uptaked by that root system, which is the whole reason that you're putting the water on your lawn in the first place.
But yeah, but he is right. Someone thinking about groundwater in Salem-Beverly, we're not in the watershed. So, but, but your, but your advocacy is, I, you know, the low flow summer problem is the worst in the upper parts of the watershed, right? So if you were really trying to, if they were, could conserve better and reduce demand, it'd be better for the ecology.
Yeah, absolutely. There's also a component of this. So we have sewer system in Salem. Our wastewater goes, it's like, no. And then out to the ocean. A lot of these communities are also connected back to that. So Danvers, Beverly, part of Middleton. So all of the water that they're using that's going into the sewer is also being exported to the basin and then out to the ocean. The communities on here like Baxford, Tupsfield, Hamilton that have septic tanks, those septic tanks discharge back into the basin. So that's a closed loop system. So in that case, water going down their drains is ultimately recharging this whole basin. For here outside the basin, which a lot of our population is, their sewage is not doing anything to recharge the groundwater. I think, I actually put this slide in, my last point, which we touched on a little bit earlier, was we put these, we talked a lot about water quantity today. The other piece of this is water quality. We're very fortunate that the Ipswich River is in general a very clean river. We don't have any industrial discharges into the river. So the pollution that we're concerned about is stormwater. What is, what is rainwater picking up as it flows across the landscape? And what is that putting into our rivers? So for us, it's a lot of fertilizer, that's a concern, pesticides, road salts. We're seeing elevated levels of salt in streams, which is obviously bad for freshwater ecosystem. From a, you know, water supply perspective, we talked a little bit about how these watersheds are directly connected to Salem's reservoirs. So we want to be very mindful of what is happening in those watersheds that is flowing directly into the reservoir. This withdrawal point on the Ipswich River, which is where the canal starts, the drainage area for that is everything, this is that point. Basically, everything from here over is ending up in the river and making its way downstream. And so part of the role of a Watershed Association is to take that watershed wide view. And we want to make sure that what is happening in Wilmington and North Reading and Middleton is not showing up in the river, both for ecological benefits and also for the benefits of the people that are relying on the river downstream there. That's our value add to you. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
So Erin, do, like, other Ipswich River, sorry, other river watershed groups, do they have like an index of like the health? Would you, and with our, you know, less industrial users in the watershed, we must rate pretty good, except for the low flow summer problem?
Yeah, so our river is very clean. We have a lot of conserved land right next to the river. So if you guys have been up to Bradley Palmer or Ipswich River Wildlife Sanctuary or the trustees have a few properties, like that's all great for river health. So for us, and we don't have any sewage in our river, that's also great. So not the case in like the Meramec and the Charles. They have quite a bit of sewage in their rivers. Because, yes, because originally when we first started building sewage systems back in the 1800s, we put stormwater and sewage in the same pipe, which means the systems are designed, when it rains heavily, to overflow in, directly into the river instead of going to the treatment plant first. And so subsequently, we figured out that was not a great idea. And newer cities have separate storms drains and sewage drains. And so rainstorms should not be flooding your sewage pipes. But for older cities like Cambridge, Boston, Lawrence, Lowell, Haverhill, they still have those combined pipes in part and so they still experience overflow in rain and ice. Yeah, so we, so that's not an issue that we particularly work on. But for us, you know, the challenges to the health of the river is the low flow situation. When a river starts flowing at zero or starts flowing backwards, that's not a healthy river. And I will say that Ipswich and its sister to the north, the Parker, are the poster children in Massachusetts for this challenge of low flows. And so we are the ones who talk about this the most of all the Watershed Associations. Yeah.
Does your organization do any advocacy or lobbying? So what are you working on?
Good, that wasn't a plant. We were at the State House today. Doing, we were participating in Lobby for the Rivers Day, which is a statewide effort. All of the river and watershed groups across the state were there. Our number one piece of legislation this session is the drought bill, which is aimed at mandating stricter water conservation standards and standardizing them based on drought conditions. Currently, drought, water conservation standards are based on essentially what's written into your permit, which varies depending on when your permit was issued and how that kind of evolved over time. So that legislation is attempting to standardize it and get people to conserve more. Also, we're looking at, when helping? Codifying DER, which is the Division of Ecological Restoration, which is a state agency that we do a lot of work with. And we're also working on the Nature for Massachusetts Coalition, which is dual purpose. It's a bill, but also a citizens' ballot initiative aimed at getting more funding for land and water conservation in the state. And what it does is take the existing sales tax on sporting goods and direct it specifically to land and water conservation efforts.
Is that for November?
It's for November of 2026.
2026.
Yeah, but we are collecting signatures. We're part of a coalition that's collecting signatures in support of that ballot initiative that's happening this fall. So you will probably see people asking for signatures. They were at Market Basket last weekend. And so if you see them, I would encourage you to put your name down and help us get to support to get that on to that level.
Through what mechanism does the state have to enforce water conservation measures in a town?
Yeah, very little. They, the water conservation, so your water conservation standards are written into your water withdrawal permit. Every municipal water system has a permit. And so that's how the state mandates what you have to do. The enforcement on that is, could maybe be a little bit tighter. But there are, it is outlined what each, what each town and city has to do based on the permit.
Do you lobby for a bill that would implement like stricter, what some kind of water conservation measures?
Yeah, so right now it's kind of a patchwork. And I'll give you kind of the extreme examples in our watershed. Ipswich is the most, yeah, I'm going to say the most water stressed community. They actually implement water bans, which are, you know, no outdoor water use that are much more restrictive than the state level bans because they're trying to get ahead of low supplies in their reservoirs. So if you drive into downtown Ipswich, most of the time in the summer, you will see a big banner over one that says water ban. They're actually very diligent about enforcing that. Like they're, Rachel, Rachel is driving around in her car and looking for people with sprinklers on. And if she catches you, she get a warning and then you get a fine. And she's also trying to be proactive about reaching out to people that she knows are using sprinklers or maybe have a leak because you can see that in their water bill and help them get that fixed. On the other end of the spectrum, you know, Salem doesn't have those requirements in their permit and that's basically because we have been grandfathered in. Our water rights supersede conservation measures. So for a long time, we didn't have to do anything for water conservation. They have been evolving slightly. And so you may have seen recently in the, in the last drought, Salem has started putting up signs encouraging people to not use, to not use outdoor, restrict outdoor water use. There's outdoor water ban in Salem. That's a new evolution in the regulatory landscape.
Does that apply to golf courses?
Yeah, no. So outdoor water bans only apply to what they deem as non-essential outdoor water use, which is irrigation of turf that is not being used for commercial purposes, right? So it's residential lawns, it's like the grass strips and the medians, things like that. But golf, if you're using the water for commercial purposes, so that would be farms and also golf courses, commercial car washes, you are allowed to use that water, so. The golf course question is a great one. And Mass Audubon has, not, not Mass Audubon, Audubon Society, the national organization, they have kind of standards for golf courses to think about how you manage a golf course sustainably with a kind of an eye towards ecological health. So we always refer golfers to those standards if you want to think about how you play golf and also protect the environment, that that course is situated there.
Do you, do you happen to know what the current, I probably should know this if I had been like water, leaflet, but what the percent of lost water is in the Salem-Beverly system?
Do I answer that though? I, yeah, I do estimate that the unaccounted for water, which is different from lost water. So I just, I want to be clear because the way that the unaccounted for water is calculated is associated with a lot of things that we don't know. The number of things are not metering it. So there's a couple of parks, there's when we fight fires, when they do. We don't meter that water. So we're only allowed to evaluate it based on the equations that EPA allows us to use. So it is a conflated number because we're not allowed to put in what we really know. But I think it's 30%, I don't, yeah, I don't remember the.
I would say Salem's around 25 to 30%. That's a number I would love to see go down. The state asks that people, that communities target 10%. Some amount of leakage in the system is kind of unavoidable and it would be, wouldn't be cost effective to get to zero. But shooting for 10 would be, would be great. But it is complicated, especially in a city like Salem that has old infrastructure. And that is also, just to note, that unaccounted for water rate is just what we're losing, to Doug's point, between, before the meter, right? So we're purchasing it from the water supplier, we're not metering it. If you're, if it's leaking in your home or in your sprinkler system, you're paying for that because on the other side of the meter. So that's not unaccounted for water, but it is also ways good.
Can I offer that you do have the ability to log on to see what your home use is for your water? I don't know if you guys all know that, but you can. I think that's a little bit of a mention, just so you know. That way you can see if you have a leak and use luck.
Yeah, actually, I would say Salem has one of the best like interfaces for water use of all the communities because you can log on and you can see kind of real time water use. And if you want to see if you're leaking, like look at it before bed and don't look at it when you wake up. And you shouldn't have used any water, short water, in that time. If you have, then something is leaking.
Can renters see their water use?
Unless you have the bill, because you need the bill in order to get into the system. So you need to ask your landlord for, copy the bill rapidly.
I don't, I don't think I'll do that.
That's a huge challenge in a community like Salem that has a high level of renters too. The state of Massachusetts, I think it's Massachusetts, maybe it's city by city, but typically requires landlords to pay for water. And so the user, the tenant in that case, doesn't get any visibility into how much water they're using. And they also don't have any incentive to conserve water because they don't pay the bill directly. Presumably it's built into that rent at some point. But that's another, you know, we're thinking about water conservation as a real strategy. That's a huge component. How do we reach, how do we reach renters and get them, you know, having water efficient appliances and also having the ability to actually have that information in their decisions.
So is it, do some cities and towns get that information to renters? Or is it probably a nationwide problem, right?
Well, it's, I think in Massachusetts, I haven't, I haven't come across any town in Massachusetts where the landlord isn't the one responsible for the water bill. It's not the case nationwide.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I think condos and like a big condo building work like that too. Like I have a, I have a condo that's part of like a large complex and that, and we don't see the water bill for that either.
And you might.
Well, you could, right? I mean, if you're on your owner, you could ask to see the water bill.
Oh, could I, I, I just, I just.
Well, you probably, it might be, like the meter might be for the building, not for every unit. So that would be hard to, yeah, hard to.
I just, I just figured as such because they don't price people for how much water they use. Everyone pays the same amount.
Yeah.
But yeah, I could look into that.
Yeah, you could get your budget.
Okay.
But man, when I, the last five minutes of our conversation, those are like real concrete things that could be done, that just, they just gotta be implemented. You know, but the idea that a renter never sees the water bill, a condo owner doesn't see the water bill easily. But, but, they're just, they're just, they don't, they're out, they're out, they're out of the loop in terms of usage.
We, um, we have an education program with the Watershed Association too. And so what that looks like is, um, you know, educator Emma, and she goes into schools during the school year and does in-classroom enrichment programming. And she also takes kids out on the river, um, during the season, which is May to October. Um, and we have a huge emphasis on Salem kids in particular as an environmental justice community. Uh, and also, we want people to know where their water comes from. We want people to understand that they are a part of this river system. They have ownership of it, they are free to enjoy it, like come to our property, get out on the river. Um, but also you have a responsibility to protect it. And that's in your best interest because this is your tap water. Um, and we've had so many Salem kids come to our facility. We had the Carlton fourth grade there a couple of weeks ago. They all got in kayaks, and they got to go out on the river, and they got to experience bugs and, um, and I hope that they come away understanding kind of where their water is coming from, and it starts to close this gap of, you know, it rains, and then I turn on my tap, and what happens in between, and this whole ecosystem and government services and, um, a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes that are protecting our water supply and making it so that our water that comes out of our tap feels straight. Yeah.
It's a very interesting, the, the whole concept of Salem and Beverly being the two largest users and outside of the system, and it's not, outside of watershed, um, because so much of what we have heard has been all about importing and exporting and finding something, like as you, you mentioned, if it's, if it, if it derives from your watershed, it should be discharged in your watershed. And that was always a big issue with MWRA, right? The water is always coming from somewhere else and being discharged into the harbor. Um, so is it, I, I guess I hadn't really, uh, put together quite so much this, um, that break between the fact that we were not physically, uh, a part of the watershed, yet the, the largest, indeed really, we were the largest users of that water. So this is really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I would say, you know, from an environmental management perspective, a best practice kind of now with the understanding we have now is to try and keep water in the watershed where it's bridged, so to keep those systems intact. But we don't, if I got to design this system from scratch, it would look a lot different, but we don't get to do that. We have to live with, you know, in this case, four hundred years worth of infrastructure that we have been moving water around and building canals and shipping. And, you know, Salem has two rivers, and they're largely underground now. Um, we live with the, the decisions, um, from those historical decisions, the implications from those historical decisions too. And so for me, this is about, okay, you know, we're not undoing four hundred years worth of decisions. It's where do we go from here so that, um, it makes sense for the next hundred years and this continues to be a system that works in lots of different ways.
Thank you so much. And I would just say, thanks Salem Access TV, they're here diligently taping us. And, uh, we're gonna, we'll have Safe and CIRC and the City and Erwa. We can all try to advertise the, the times of broadcast so that we, we, people that are here and I could see it. So anyways, thanks so much, au- audience for coming, really appreciate it. Uh, this was actually our, our September meeting of CIRC, uh, but we had to move it to this date, uh, because of the Jewish holidays. Uh, so we are still gonna have an October meeting on the fourth Wednesday of the month. Uh, so, uh, check out our agenda in at least forty-eight hours before. You can see what we're doing. Uh, but anyways, thanks again for coming, really appreciate it.
Yeah.